None in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, so move. And we'll go to Mrs. Nguyen for the treasurer's report.
Okay, good morning. We had receipts on June eighteenth and nineteenth of ninety thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars and eighty-six cents. That brings us to a total cash of two million, nine hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars and sixty-four cents. Our expenditures this week were one billion, one hundred and seventy-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars and forty-three cents. The undistributed tax claim at this time is thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars and thirty-one cents. So we have a balance of one million, seven hundred and one thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars and ninety cents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve treasurer's report. Any question or comment? None in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so move.
Thank you.
Okay. Morning.
Good morning. Michelle Edgers, Director of Community Resources, Stephanie Arnold, Benedict Corcoran. Under personnel transactions, resignations and terminations, Bruce Bosman, Adel, Bruce Investigator, resignation effective June twenty-eighth. Ruth Snyder, caseworker supervisor one, resignation effective July twenty-sixth. Gio Franco Valdez, DJ clerk slash owner, resignation effective June seventeenth. Sandra Brinker, caseworker two, resignation eighteen to June fourth. Karen Engelhardt, full-time health services supervisor, retirement effective August thirteenth.
Make a motion to approve the resignations and terminations as read.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comment or question? Hearing none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so move.
Under FMLA needs of absence, Christopher House from the sheriff's office, eight weeks of FMLA effective July twelfth. Monica Lara from domestic relations, one year of intermittent FMLA effective June sixth. John Lurch, sheriff's office, one year of intermittent FMLA effective June fourth. And Deborah Smith, per reports, two weeks of FMLA effective July first, returning July fifteenth.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve those FMLA requests. Any question or comment? Hearing none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so move.
Under changes of status, transfers, and promotions, I have a motion to approve treasurer Sally Nguyen's request to have her current employees and Belinda Slicer in tax claim work an additional two point five hours per week for approximately six to eight weeks if needed, as well as have Colette and Colette Arts and Renee Lenkey work into office as needed for approximately six to eight weeks, all effective July thousand and eighteen.
Make a motion to support the recommendation by treasurer.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comment or question? None in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so move.
Sarah, one whole motion for caseworker one and children and youth, the caseworker two and children and youth, at the rate of one thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ninety cents by monthly, effective July fifteenth.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve that status change. Any question or comment? None in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so move.
Under other transactions, I have a motion to approve Cal Davies, area agency on aging administrator's request to hire a temporary employee through a staffing agency at the rate of twelve dollars per hour plus the applicable overhead fees, with a maximum of twenty-eight hours per week worked, effective immediately, and terminating no later than six weeks after a prize-winning care is hired.
Make a motion to hire temporary help for area agency on aging prize program.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? Hearing none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so move.
Children and youth would like to hire Catherine Panfield as a caseworker one at the rate of one thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty-five cents by monthly, effective June twenty-fourth. Children and youth would like to hire Jessica Haverly as a caseworker one at the rate of one thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty-five cents by monthly, effective June twenty-fourth. And DJ Disney would like to rehire Alyssa Suesta as a DJ clerk at the rate of seven hundred and eighty-five dollars and forty-six cents by monthly, effective June twenty-fourth. Renova would like to hire April Williams as a full-time secretary seat at the rate of eight hundred and forty-four dollars and thirty-seven cents by monthly, effective July eighth. And voter registration would like to hire Mitchell Shear as a casual part-time maintenance at the rate of twelve dollars and ninety-seven cents per hour, effective July nineteenth.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve those transactions. Any question or comment? Hearing none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so move.
Moving on to salary board, motion to approve all transactions previously read, plus the following. Robert Gibson, junior incremental increase, full-time correctional officer at prison, to the rate of sixteen dollars and forty-four cents per hour, effective May fifth. Steven Schaefer, incremental increase, full-time correctional officer at the prison, to the rate of sixteen dollars and forty-four cents, effective June thirtieth. Thomas Palmer, longevity payment, full-time correctional officer at the prison, a one-time payment of one thousand dollars, paid out from June twentieth. Jason Kane, longevity payment, full-time correctional officer at the prison, one-time payment of one thousand dollars, paid out from June twentieth. And Antonio Cotto, longevity payment, full-time correctional officer at the prison, one-time payment of five hundred dollars, paid out from July third.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve those longevity and other payment increases. It is amazing to me that three years, you know, is a longevity reflection on this world, I mean, in terms of that kind of position. But that's, that's the issue there. Yep.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comment or question? If you have none, none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so move.
Under conference summary request, under mandated, Danielle Seaman, tech company, cross film, Mike Cairn, Terry Wensler, and Tommy Kit, Thomas Essman would like to attend EST user conference in Harrisburg on July twenty-third. No registration fee, mileage, meal, and departmental reimbursement, six credits mandated by the Department of State.
Tabitha Velzak, Lindsay Nye, and Ryan Hartman would like to attend the following three, from children and youth. Foundation's Module Two, Introduction to Engagement in Mechanicsburg on July tenth, no registration fee, mileage, meal, and full reimbursement, six credits mandated by DHS. Foundation's Module Three, CPS, GPS, in Mechanicsburg on July seventeen, no registration fee, mileage, meal, and full reimbursement, six credits mandated by DHS. Foundation's Module Four, Safety Assessment in Mechanicsburg, on July twenty-second and twenty-third, no registration fee, mileage, meal, and full reimbursement, twelve credits mandated by DHS.
Megan McCone, Jody Boyd, Bailey Van Fleet, and Merk Care from children and youth would like to attend infant and early childhood training in Mechanicsburg on August eighth and ninth. No registration fee, mileage, reimbursement, two credits mandated by DHS. Todd Lockenbach from children and youth would like to attend Act One Forty-eight, influence in Mechanicsburg on July twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. No registration fee, mileage, meal, and full reimbursement, twelve credits mandated by DHS. Charles Statham from MHIBBI would like to attend man re crusher training in Warner'sville on August eighth and ninth. No registration fee, mileage, reimbursement, sixteen credits mandated by Warner'sville State Hospital. Christina Brynall, Janet Wolf, Paula Klein from probation services would like to attend Conference for Women in Works, August fifteenth. Four hundred and forty-seven dollar registration fee, meal reimbursement, seven credits mandated by PBPP. Jody Little, Cynthia Howard, Amanda Brown, and Diana Bozen from here from probation services would like to attend focus grammar improvement in Harrisburg on August first. Two hundred and ninety-six dollar registration fee, mileage, and meal reimbursement, six credits mandated by PBPP. Susan Kressner, Matthew Klein from probation services would like to attend Level One SPVP training at State College on September twelfth and thirteenth. No registration fee, lodging and meal reimbursement, twelve credits mandated by JCJC.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the mandated requests. Any comment or question? Anywho knows? Hearing none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so move.
Under non-mandated, Anna Devine and Shirley Nekini from area agency on aging would like to attend civil service and UO government information in Harrisburg on July seventeen. Forty dollar registration fee, mileage, meal, and parking reimbursement.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve that area agency on aging request. Any questions? None in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so move.
Michael Anderson from road registration would like to attend state county election personnel service conference in Philadelphia on August nineteenth through the twenty-second. Three hundred dollar registration fee, lodging, mileage, meals, parking, and full reimbursement.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve that voter registration request. Any questions? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so move. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Didn't float away last night. Now, how do you want to proceed now? Would like to introduce your colleagues. I'd be like it.
Hi, I'm Carol Davies. I'm the administrator of the area agency on aging. And with me is Anna Devine, our deputy administrator, Jen Fowler, protective services supervisor. And we brought nearly every one of our protective services workers with us. If you want to stand up, I'll introduce you one at a time. Christine Harris, Deanna Bayshore, Janet Ross, Teresa Bosman, Pam Smith, Adrian Boyer, and Terry Milgram. We have one worker who's not here today. She's already training. That's Helen Bydell. So I sent a message to Commissioner Angel Jamie a couple months ago, letting them know that this protective services unit had received a green monitoring from the state of Pennsylvania. And a few years ago, this state went to a new system of monitoring where they rate programs as either green, yellow, or red. And a green program says that the monitoring indicates no or minimal quality issues and no individuals are left at risk. The yellow monitoring says significant or repetitive quality issues, however, no individuals left at risk. And the red monitoring says that there were significant or repetitive quality issues and one or more individuals left at risk. And then follow-up happens from there based on the color of the monitoring. We had our first monitoring under that system in February of two thousand and eighteen, and we received a green monitoring. In April of this year, we had our second monitoring under the new system and received a green monitoring again. The investigators or the review said that our staff is extremely proactive in ensuring health and safety and in taking necessary steps to ensure that risk is mitigated. I am particularly very proud of this group. Most of them have not been in protective services very long. Some of them have longstanding care management backgrounds, but not necessarily in protective services. And over the past few years, we've really strived to increase the strength of our protective unit because we have some workers who do protective work all the time and others who have other duties in addition to the protective services work. And the idea is that any one of them is able to stand up and take the case at any time, and they have proof that they can do that. So I was pleased to have this opportunity for you to recognize the work that they do.
Thank you. It's very reassuring to have that quality level presenting the county. So thank you very much. Congratulations on the good outcome.
You make Lebanon County proud. Thank you all.
When Carol indicated that this occurred, I suggested that it would be a good idea to bring these folks in and have the board of commissioners recognize the service that they give because we're always proud of delivering good services to our clients in Lebanon County. So congratulations for your continued effort in doing a good job for the old people in Lebanon County.
Thank you. Thank you.
I think it's important to note that, you know, this standard that they hold isn't something that everyone gets green on.
That's correct.
There were many counties that got yellows and I guess some reds.
Yes.
So it's not as though everybody gets green and here we are with everyone else. It's quite a feat.
Yes, I think they all work very hard. And I think it's important to note that the people that they're working with are the most vulnerable people. There, there's some risk presented in their situations. And our workers, even though they investigate, they're not necessarily going to prosecute. But what their, what their aim is, is to reduce that risk to the older adults.
Very good. Anybody want to comment? Speeches or... We good? Well, thank you again. Thank you very much. You always use good news like that, don't you?
Definitely. Our second item here today is our more normal annual presentation of our contracts. This year, we have just a few two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen contract amendments with two changes, totaling three thousand, two hundred dollars. We do have funds available within our budget to pay for those costs. So we're not asking for any additional county support in order to fund these two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen amendments.
Make a motion to approve the budget as presented.
Second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the contract amendments. Any comment or question? Hearing none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so move.
Thank you. The second item is our contracts for the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty fiscal year. As you know, we work on a fiscal year that begins on July first and ends on June thirtieth every year. So for the new fiscal year that's about to begin, we have thirty-eight contracts listed with a total value of one million, sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars. In these contracts, we're generally not allowed for increases in rates because the Department of Aging does not allow us to give rate increases to providers unless it's in conjunction with what they allow in the block grant. And normally, we do not get that notification until after the fiscal year has begun. Some of the contracts do not have caps because we look internally to track the expenditures because there are more than one, there's more than one provider that can provide a particular service. In conjunction with the contracts, we always present our budget for the fiscal year. The total revenues and expenditures that we expect for the new year are three million, eight hundred and fifty-five thousand, thirty-three, thirty-three dollars. That's a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars more than the previous year budget. And part of the reason for that is some additions we need to our protective services staff. Again, I will reiterate that we're not requesting any additional county support to fund these contracts for the new fiscal year.
So.
So I'll make a motion to approve the provider contracts for... Did we do the first one?
Yeah, we did the amount.
Okay, so for twenty nineteen, twenty.
Oh, second motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the provider contracts. Any comment or question? Hearing none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so move.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me ask a question about the green. Is there any additional... Sometimes quality is, you know, different levels are reimbursed or there are, you know, extra allocations made by virtue of good ratings for quality? Anything tied to that with the state or...
Not in this particular...
Okay. I wasn't sure. It's, it's often that way with healthcare, many things to, you know, quality.
There is a push from the state to provide additional money to protective services all across the state because not just here in Lebanon County, but all across the state, there's an increase in the number of cases. So we are, did receive a small amount of extra funds this year, and we'll hope to get additional funds next year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Good morning, none in all.
Good morning, sir.
So you may introduce yourself and then proceed.
My name is Roman Shea. I'm the director of the Renova Center. And I'm here to present several contracts and service agreements for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, for the commissioners to approve. And again, I'm pleased to report that no county support will be requested for any of these. First Aid Safety Patrol, they provide emergency and non-emergency ambulance transport services for residents. That has remained the same. I think there are fifteen years and it hasn't changed. So that's, we're really pleased with that. Developmental Disabilities Resources, this individual provides psychological evaluations and behavioral support plans for, for our residents. And again, that rate has remained the same for this fiscal year.
Can I just mention the rates as well?
Okay, okay. The First Aid Safety Patrol was forty dollars per bed at the group subscription rate. Developmental Disabilities Resources is ninety-four dollars an hour. Next one I have is Apex Rehab Solutions. They provide physical, occupational, and speech therapy for our residents. Physical therapy is seventy dollars an hour. Occupational therapy is sixty-eight, and speech therapy is sixty-eight. And I put in some, some information about Cedar Haven had dissolved the agency contract with Select Rehab, which we've had for years. And Renova's that are kind of piggybacked off, off of them. But Cedar Haven opted not to hire, or opted to hire their own therapist instead of contracting with a, with an agency. So given our, given our need, we checked out other, other agencies and picked Apex Rehab. They're based out of Pittsburgh, however, they do have satellites in this area.
Do you recall how close that rate was to where you were paying?
Yeah, it was, for physical therapy, it was sixty, so it went to seventy. That's a sixteen point seven percent increase. And occupational and speech were at fifty-five, and that went to sixty-eight.
Don't have the volume, I guess.
Right, right. I don't expect, you know, a lot of money to be coming out of that. But it all depends, it all depends upon the nature of our, our residents. Bridgesburg Community Health Center, we have Dr. Hager as our medical director. He has requested a three percent increase. It was a thousand, a thousand, thirty dollars a month. And it's for this fiscal year, requesting a thousand and sixty per month. It's been about two, two or three years, because that rate had to remain the same. So this is his first increase in a number of years.
I have a question. Have CCAP reviewed the medical director's contract? I would like to respectfully ask that they do. I saw some things in here, and I saw another contract that was questioned.
Okay.
Just to make sure on the update. Thank you. I just wanted to knock this one down. Thank you.
Years, after the area rehab services, which provide adult training services, work activities centers for, for our residents. We have twelve currently going, two years right now. And that rate has decreased. From four dollars and one cent per fifteen minutes, from four forty-five, excuse me, from four forty-five to four of one for fifteen minutes. And the other work activities went from two forty-five to two twenty-seven, so there were decreases. And again, that's a state run. They set those fees. So those fees were, were set at four forty-five, and they changed them this year. And DB Fisher. I did get the contract yesterday with Fisher Transportation. They, they provide transportation for the twelve residents to go to in two years. Last year's rate was twenty-eight, sixty. This year's rate is twenty-nine, fourteen. So one point seven, one point nine percent increase.
Is that twenty-nine, fourteen?
Yes, twenty-nine dollars and fourteen cents a dollar.
I'll make a motion to adopt the rates presented.
Do you want to include the contract?
Oh, Aztec, yeah. I'm sorry, that's the third page here. Aztec provides consultation services, prepares us, toss reports and budgets for us, not only to the state, but also to the county. And those rates remain the same as last year.
Okay.
My motion is to adopt the Aztec.
Nice one, do another one, motion.
Okay.
Good. Oh, is that the new motion? It's been moved and seconded that we adopt all those changes in rates for the coming year. Any comment or question? Hearing none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so move. Thank you.
Any further from the open? Any word of report? The two nurses?
Yes, from the prison. They came over. There's a possibility of a third one. She's kind of coming and going with it. The one's a yes, and the next one was a no, and then that's yes or no. So you'll know if it's allowed.
How many vacancies do you have for nurses right now?
That's one, one full-time.
One more full-time, you mean?
Yes, and a part-time.
And a part-time.
Yeah. So.
So anybody can come in and apply with you if they have, if they need a job?
Yeah, we're looking.
Okay.
There, there's such a nursing shortage around.
Well, CTC just graduated a whole different files.
When I see them over at Cedar Haven, because I go there for clinical, I can bring them in, I do. See, they're here. You know, you're graduating here, we have openings over. Come, come take a look at us.
Makes a special person.
Yeah.
Just a side, I think you should have asked this earlier, but First Aid Safety, forty dollars, is that for licensed beds or occupied beds? Or how's that forty dollars for...
It's for total occupancy capacity.
Twenty-five.
Right, so twenty-four. We have twenty-four beds now. Because if we get someone in, you know, mid-year or whatever, it's...
I'm just a little struck that it hasn't been adjusted in fifteen years. Maybe that tells me something. Thank you. All right.
And again, thanks for all your support for Renova. We look forward to seeing you again.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you, Rob.
Yes.
It's about time to have another party, isn't it?
You'll be first on the list.
Okay.
One track line here. Have a great day.
Thank you, Rob. I have three items to present. The first being contracts for medical assistance transportation through the Community Action Partnership Program. And these are for provider Marie Harder at the rate seen previously.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the cap request of Ms. Harder. Comment or question? Hearing none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so move.
I have disabled veteran exemption from property real estate tax requests. Present to you five of them. Michael Furman of Mountville Drive, Lebanon. As you, as you of course recall, we entered into a sales agreement with BT Aspen Hill Partners, or also known as BT Management LLC from Altoona, for just over four acres of property there back in 2017, I believe. We have been through a few amendments to that sales agreement while Aspen Hill has been doing some investigation related to some other acquisitions, some tenant leases, some traffic issues, and so on. And the amendment that we have in play right now expires June 30th. So what I have before you is a third amendment to the agreement of sale, which would extend to June 30, 2020, with a settlement date also noted in the agreement that shall be on or before June 30, 2020. In exchange for the additional time, Aspen Hill is willing to increase the purchase price from what was $750,000 in the previous amendment to now $770,000 at closing on or before June 30 next year. So the changes in the amendment that I gave to you are the purchase price increase being noted in paragraph 2.02 of $770,000. The buyer shall have until May 18, 2020, to do their investigation, which then starts the 45-day clock to closing on June 30th. And paragraph 2.04 was added, which outlines settlement, simply saying that it'll, it shall occur on or before June 30th, to be held at the offices of the title company selected by the buyer, and that seller does not need to be present so long as all the obligations of the settlement are met.
Make a motion that we approve the changes in the existing contract for land in the east end of Lebanon.
Second motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comment or question? Hearing none in all favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same sign, so moved.
Make a motion that we approve the changes in the existing contract for land in the east end of Lebanon.
Second motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comment or question? Hearing none in all favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same sign, so moved.
I have Disabled Veteran Exemption from Property Real Estate Tax Request to present to you five of them. Michael Furman of Mountville Drive, Lebanon, Cheryl Williams of Enders Road, Lebanon, John Gogetz of Mark Street, Richland, Michael Rice of Oak Finch Drive, Homayra, and Richard McGovern, Sr. of East Pine Street, Homayra, all having met the criteria for that approval.
Make a motion to approve the 100% disabled veterans and/or spouses for real estate, real estate tax exemption.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve those property tax exemptions. Any question or comment? Hearing none in all favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same sign, so moved.
The last item I have is in relation to the county-owned property in South Lebanon Township on East Walnut Street that is adjacent to the driver licensing center. As you, as you of course recall, we entered into a sales agreement with BT Aspen Hill Partners, or also known as BT Management LLC from Altoona, for just over four acres of property there back in 2017, I believe. We have been through a few amendments to that sales agreement while Aspen Hill has been doing some investigation related to some other acquisitions, some tenant leases, some traffic issues, and so on. And the amendment that we have in play right now expires June 30th. So what I have before you is a third amendment to the agreement of sale, which would extend to June 30, 2020, with a settlement date also noted in the agreement that shall be on or before June 30, 2020. In exchange for the additional time, Aspen Hill is willing to increase the purchase price from what was $750,000 in the previous amendment to now $770,000 at closing on or before June 30 next year. So the changes in the amendment that I gave to you are the purchase price increase being